Four o'clock, I'd like to call this Bay County Board of Commissioners meeting to order Tuesday, December the 8th at 4:00 PM via Zoom. Roll call, please. When you state that you are here, make sure you state where you, what city you are calling from. Thank you.
Commissioner Krieger?
I'm here, Bangor Township on the beautiful shore of the Saginaw Bay.
Commissioner Begic?
Commissioner Chambers, I'm here.
Commissioner Kunin?
Here, 706 Sidney, Bay City.
Commissioner Herrick?
Here in Bay City.
Commissioner Ryder?
Here in Bay City.
Commissioner Lutz?
Commissioner Chambers in Bay City, Michigan.
Commissioner Durancheck?
Here, County Building, Bay City, Michigan.
All present.
Thank you, ma'am. Please rise for the invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance. Oh, sorry. Lord, we ask that you grant to this Board of Commissioners and to all those in authority patience and understanding to work together for the good of all people. In your holy name, we ask this. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ma'am. Before you, you have the minutes of the November meeting. What's your pleasure? So, motion, support, Begic? We have motion of support. Any discussion? Hearing none, roll call, vote, please.
Commissioner Begic?
Yes.
Commissioner Kunin?
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz?
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger?
Yes.
Chairman Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yays, zero nays.
Right, thank you. At this time, citizen input. Do they want to have anything they'd like to say during citizen input? Seeing none. We'll move on to petitions and communications. We're gonna go ahead and hear from Joel Stras. He's gonna give us a COVID update. Joel?
Thank you, Commissioner Durancheck. What I'm gonna do is I'm gonna share my screen with you and share a short presentation with you today. Let me bring it up there. Okay. So, as you all know, we are in the midst of a surge since the end of October. And we want to talk about a few things that have been taking place in the last few weeks. And I'm gonna start off with this graph. And we're gonna start off kind of doing this clockwise with, on the right-hand side, with case investigation and tracing. We are seeing an abnormally large number of cases and have seen an abnormally large number of cases since the end of October. So much so that we've had to prioritize our engagement into two categories. One is from residents of age zero to 22 because of the school age and the potential for spread within the schools. And also residents aged 60 and over for obvious reasons, because they may be more vulnerable. But more importantly, that's the largest population segment here in Bay County. And as I said before, right now, as far as reaching out and speaking with them personally, we limit that to those two groups. And we ask that the adult population in between report their health status if they test positive via our online case investigation form. And we've had varying degrees of success with that. We're hoping to build upon our success with that in the future. Currently, our test positivity rate is 17%, and that is one of the highest rates in the state of Michigan. Ideally, it should be 1% or less and really should be no higher than 10%. Getting above 10% gets us into the highest population category with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. On the same rate, the average number of cases per million, the daily rate of cases per million over time is about 610 per nine. And that ideal rate should be 50 or less. And just to give you some perspective, two months ago, at the beginning of October, we were about 30 cases per million. So we've actually grown pretty, our, the number of cases has exponentially grown since that time and has remained high. So our hospital capacity and our testing capacity, while we were facing, we are and we still are facing some strains on both of those, they are holding up presently. But it's, we have to all work together within the community and to try to limit the spread of the virus. Because what we see happen is that with high numbers of cases, that will usually translate within a week or two into high hospitalization rates. And currently, at McLaren Bay region, we're looking at about anywhere of an average of about 80 to 90 persons that have tested positive and that have been admitted onto an inpatient basis at McLaren Bay region. We work with McLaren Bay region and we talk with them several times a week. And we stand by them and ready to commit resources, whether it's extra testing capacity or trying to leverage extra capacity from the state of Michigan as well. But for right now, they're doing, they're holding their own, but they are filled. They are at capacity while we speak. And that is happening too regionally. You may have heard that Covenant probably has the highest number of COVID cases in the state of Michigan at a hospital. And they are not a major metropolitan area like Detroit, Southeast Michigan, or the southwest part of Michigan. So that really should underscore for you the fact that we are in the epicenter of the surge here in the state of Michigan at the present time. Just to kind of give you some perspective of the number of cases that we've had since September. You know, in the beginning of August, when the decision was made to put a pause on some of the in-person school, we thought we had a high caseload then. It was actually a little over 200, maybe 300. That went down significantly in September to about 190. And as a result, that number actually tripled in the month of October. And then from the month of October to the month of November, that time, the amount of confirmed positive cases was about five times that amount. So you can see just the magnitude of where we're at right now. Now, in this first week of December, we have a total of about 551 cases. And if we keep things up, we will probably be on par to just being a little over 2,000, maybe 2,500 through the month of December. That's why it's especially important in this holiday season when people want to gather with their friends and their family, that they need to be cognizant of the risks that are involved. Not so much of the risks that they may take on in and of themselves if they're young and healthy, but the risks that they may be transmitting to others, especially those that are medically vulnerable in our senior population. I do want to speak a few minutes on the number of deaths that have occurred. The number of deaths in the months of November and December is pretty much double that that has taken place since the beginning of the pandemic. And one of the things that, one of the questions we get from time to time, and do people take this seriously? And it really depends. But I do want to point this out, and this is the reason why people should take this seriously. And to give you some historical perspective on things. Right now, we are at about 110, maybe about 115. We need to verify some of these numbers, excuse me, and number of deaths. But if the number of deaths continue to increase as they have in this month of December, overall, we will have surpassed as far as the number of fatalities go to COVID-19. The number of fatalities that we had for servicemen during World War II in Bay County. There was about 194 deaths to soldiers and sailors to Bay County residents that were Bay County residents during World War II. We could easily surpass that here in the month of December. So while this may not, while people may think that this doesn't affect me, or it affects, you know, just older people, or people that aren't as healthy, it really does affect all of us. And as we had warned from the beginning, the consequences of our actions can have catastrophic, can be catastrophic. But I do want to end on a message of hope and of what, and to give you some perspective as to what we are doing here. We are not only trying to track every case of COVID-19, but we are actively planning and preparing to provide vaccines starting in the coming weeks. We know that there are gonna be two vaccines that are expected to be approved at least at the beginning of next week and maybe the week after that. Each of those vaccines require handling, special handling and storage. Each of those vaccines require two doses. And depending on which one you get, they may be 21 or 28 days apart. We face an immense challenge here in Bay County to do this. This is not something that the hospital can do alone, or the health department can do alone, or just the health department in conjunction with the hospital. In order to achieve herd immunity, that is, to basically get back to our equilibrium where we were before the pandemic erupted here in Bay County. We need to vaccinate up to 70,000 residents at two shots each. That's 140,000 shots for that time period. This is the largest public health initiative in Bay County. Just to give you some perspective on the number of shots that we have to distribute, we normally, on average, administer about 4,500 shots to children and adults here in the Bay County Health Department on an annual average. So this is quite an exponential number of shots that we have to provide. And as I said before, the largest public health initiative here in Bay County history. And it requires the coordination and cooperation of just about all of our medical providers, our businesses, our schools, governments and other organizations. It's gonna require precise scheduling and administration because of those two doses. And once you're on track with one vaccine, you can't mix that with another vaccine. If you receive a Moderna vaccine, you have to finish with the Moderna vaccine. If you receive a Pfizer vaccine, you have to finish with that Pfizer vaccine. And that each one has separate dosing schedules. One is at 21 days, as I mentioned before, the other one is at 28 days. We know that there probably will be more vaccines coming along too, especially from AstraZeneca and Johnson &amp; Johnson. So as I said before, this requires an immense amount of coordination and cooperation. We'll be talking about that later on during the board meeting. But not only within our county here, but within our neighboring counties in the region. And we know that based on our previous experience with other flu clinics and H1N1, the vaccines that we provided for that, we can't just have people crowd into a gym or a large auditorium to give out vaccine. We've got to maintain social distancing. We've got to really have the capacity to track who got what type of vaccine and make sure that they get the appropriate vaccine at the appropriate time. We know that we're probably gonna see folks from neighboring communities come to Bay County to obtain the vaccine. So that's why we are actively cooperating with Saginaw and Midland Counties as well. And we've had actually a few meetings already with them, with their health departments and with other providers and businesses and community organizations to help meet this goal. Our ultimate goal is to meet these metrics by July 4th of this year. I would love to see that we would have a fireworks celebration like we had in the past. And you might say that this is a pretty, a pretty tall order for a short period of time. And yes, it is. But it's something that we can measure ourselves and strive to meet in that, in that time period. But in the meantime, we still all have to do our part by wearing a mask, watching our distance, washing our hands, using appropriate hygiene. These are the important things. We need to do everything that we can to try to mitigate the spread of the virus so that we can administer the vaccine and, and get back to normalcy sooner rather than later. Now, I'm happy to answer any questions at this time.
Joel, Mike Durancheck here. Thank you very much for the presentation. My question is, the refrigeration is required. Have you, do you have the refrigeration or the storage capacity at the health department currently?
So we have on order, right now, we've got a deep freezer that is capable of storing the Pfizer vaccine, which has to be stored at 70 degrees centigrade. That should be here by the beginning of 2021, the first, the first week of January. We have some limited capacity right now to store the Moderna vaccine, which only has to be stored at negative 30 degrees centigrade. And that actually has a longer shelf life once it's constituted and can be refrigerated as well. So we can extend that as well. But we are extending our storage capacity. We are working with McLaren Bay region, who already has storage capacity for the Pfizer vaccine and for others. And we are hoping to work with other community providers, either one, to provide storage capacity for them so they can administer the vaccine, or B, work with them to obtain that storage capacity as well.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions? Commissioner Begic?
I just had one point. I'm trying to sell the vaccine to a lot of people. So I've been mentioning that this is a different vaccine. This is a messenger RNA. It's not a weakened form of the virus. Some people seem to be worried that the previous shots, like flu shots, are a weakened form of the virus. But this is, this is a different entity. I don't know if that helps sell getting the shot or not, but.
You are correct, Commissioner. Those, the Pfizer vaccine and the Moderna vaccine are mRNA-based vaccines. And they are not weakened forms of the virus, or they're not attached to another type of virus like an adenovirus. That actually will be coming in the AstraZeneca vaccine if it is approved. One of the major concerns, which is unfounded, is if I take an mRNA vaccine, will that mess up my DNA? And the answer is unequivocally no. It's not going to cause any damage to any person's DNA. And I will say this too. I am very confident in the ability of FDA and the independent oversight boards that are looking at the vaccine and the data from the vaccine. And as has been reported countless times, these vaccines are, seem to be safe and very, very effective. Much more effective than a flu vaccine is.
Thank you.
Let's see, we have Commissioner Herrick with his hand up.
Thank you. Joel, I just want to make sure that, I think I've heard this before, but I'd like it reiterated. If people, I know a lot of people have had the COVID already, and they would, it'd be a good idea for them to get this vaccine also, even though they've had it, they've been exposed to it and have been treated for it, or lived through the COVID-19 already.
So that's a good question, Commissioner. What we expect is that there will be some guidance from both CDC and the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services. We expect that persons.
Rules up.
Those who have had a more recent infection, though they probably have natural antibodies currently. And so we anticipate that they may be put on a delayed schedule to obtain the vaccine. But essentially, everyone should, if they can, receive the vaccine.
Thank you.
Commissioner Kunin, you were next.
Thank you. Joel, you were talking about, I kind of had the same question that Commissioner Herrick had. Do we know what percentage of the folks in the county have had the infection so far?
So what we can say for certainty right now is about 5% have confirmed positive cases. We can extrapolate that we can probably double that number, and it's about probably 10% overall have been exposed at the very least. Now, the good question is, of those people that either have confirmed positive cases or exposed, do they have antibody protection that is sufficient to protect them from further reinfection? And at this point in time, we cannot say that with certainty.
If I could follow up on that, you were talking about 70% immunity or herd immunity by July. At what point prior to July, if the vaccinations start late in December or January, where can we get, where do you see, or does the CDC or the state see where people can get back to some of a more normal life than we're at right now?
So I think there's gonna be a variety of different metrics that will be used to measure when restrictions can be lifted or when some of the public health mitigation measures can be pushed, pulled back. Part of that's gonna be, first of all, the number of people that are vaccinated. But more importantly, it's gonna be a real big reduction in the number of infections and hospitalizations. Hopefully, that will come fairly soon. And then with the number, the more and more that people are vaccinated, and the more and more that we see that, that the spread has pretty much been blunted, I'm hoping that, as I said before, in the first part of June, all the way up into July, that, you know, we see a really, really significant reduction in those cases. Now, there may be minor cases still, and we still may have, we still will probably have COVID-19 cases throughout the year, even past July. But what we're hoping to see is that the severity of those cases has really been blunted and that the death rates and hospitalization rates come down almost to nothing.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Barsha, here now.
Yeah, I just wanted to say thank you again, Joel, for an excellent presentation. And I do want the public to know what an extraordinary job you and our Bay County Health Department staff have been doing since last March. And what we're seeing with this recent surge in numbers of infections and deaths in Bay County is something that is not limited to our region. As we know, it's happening across the country, across the state. And it is because, I think, you know, some people are facing pandemic fatigue and others, you know, still maybe question whether or not the virus is real or injurious to human health. And I see some good public advertising regarding vaccinations. Do you have any sense in terms of acceptance of the vaccinations? And also, I'm not sure if Amber Davis-Johnson or Heather would want to chime in, but the employers who would like to see their staff vaccinated, if they have a portion of their workforce that resists vaccinations of all types, not just COVID? What is the legal status of that? And also, are you seeing progress through the public communication and messaging relative to, you know, why, why we're seeing the surge? And the fact that close contact and, you know, family celebrations, as much as we love them all, have been a contributing factor to the recent rise that we've seen, as well as the cold weather. You know, it's, it's not just human behavior. It's part of nature too. We're spending more time inside. And we're, and we're seeing the onset of the holiday season. We're beyond Thanksgiving, but people will be Christmas shopping. More people are doing that online. But do you see increased risk as people begin to shop for the holidays and then celebrate holidays, Christmas and possibly New Years? But I want to mostly say thank you, Joel, for your leadership. And I know I've gotten questions from people who are wondering if Bay County isn't doing enough. And I can say on behalf of my knowledge, what the commission has done and what our cabinet has done under your leadership and the other, the other, you know, appointed directors in Bay County government from Central Dispatch and Ryan Manns, and of course, Chris Zwarzky and the sheriff, and virtually everyone, all working together as a team to try to mitigate the harm to our local residents. I know it's a long, it's not really a question, it's more of a statement. I want you to know that many, many people appreciate the tenacity of what you have shown in pursuing every option to keep our Bay County residents safe.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that. My, my staff very much appreciates that. And as far as messaging goes, what I've seen so far is I've had very little experience in people being very skeptical about the vaccine. I think that's a bright light of hope for people out in the community. And I've had extensive discussions with a number of providers and, and folks and leaders in our community about really encouraging people to get vaccinated and to do everything that they can so that we can get over this. Nobody is more tired of this pandemic than I am. And, you know, the key thing, as I said before, is if we, if we give people a goal, if we give our residents a goal and, and provide them the resources and the opportunities to be vaccinated, vaccinated and to get through this holiday season in the most healthy way and safe way possible, we can truly have a good 2021.
Wonderful.
Further question. Hopefully, the federal government is gonna step up here with another stimulus or package to help out counties and cities and individuals. Is there a need for the county to extend the state of emergency at this time to take advantage of like the, in case there's another CARES Act or something like that that may come around?
You know, Mr. Chairman, if I could, not all counties did extend that state of emergency and, and they were awarded federal funds and grants. Something we will consider, but it will be, you know, we're watching things and I, I listen to our experts in the health department, Dr. Bender and, and Director Stras and others, as well as members of the community. And something that's certainly on the table, we'll be looking at. I know that we've been keeping the county open, only partially staffed. Most, all of the work, all the work that I know is being done remotely. And, you know, so we're, so far, I think we're doing pretty well. But we will monitor that situation, Mr. Chairman, and see exactly what happens on stimulus. It may be January before we're likely to see the three departments of the federal government come to agreement, both the executive branch, the, I don't mean the judicial, but the Senate and the House. And the House seems to be anxious to pass another. And I understand negotiations are continuing with the Senate Majority Leader. Differences, but it looks like it's coming together. But it could well be that we're looking at January before we see anything concrete. But I pledge that we will monitor that. And if it is necessary, it will be definitely on the table. And I'll be, of course, seeking guidance from the commission, as well as my department heads and particularly Director Stras.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Thank you, Joel. Anyone else have anything for Joel? If not, we'll move ahead with reports and resolutions of the committees. Ways and Means, Mr. Commissioner Thomas Harry.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I bring before this Commission Resolution Number 2020/198 as amendment to 2021 Bay County Budget. I move this resolution.
Or Kunin? We have motion support. Seeing none, roll call, vote, please.
Commissioner Kunin?
Commissioner Begic, I am sorry.
I have to give my vote here. So a couple of points, number 15, page 6, talks about the pay and we're not increasing our pay, we've got that frozen. The travel miles, I know we've had some disagreement about travel miles from our place of residence to the county building. I don't think we should be paying it, but apparently we, we can pay it or we are paying it. And the next page, page 7, number 20, the per diem, I disagree with the per diem for the county commissioners, since we're getting a salary already. I, I agree with it for the public members of the committees, the jury, the elections, the Board of Canvassers, the Building Authority, Michigan Works, Midland Airport and the Department of Human Services are getting the per diem pay. I think we should, as commissioners, should not be getting that. But I will still vote for the resolution itself. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Mr. Coonan's got his hand up.
Commissioner Coonan.
Thank you. I just want to thank Bob Redman and Kim Presidents. They, you know, it's quite an involved process here and a lot of pages, a lot of numbers and, you know, for us guys that, we don't work there on a day-to-day basis, just to get some questions answered and to take an initial $2 million deficit down to $350,000, that went through a lot of work between Bob and Kim Presidents and, and the executive as well. So it, it's, I just think that they need to have a nice shout out for all the work that they've done and they present us with a budget that we are willing, are able to support and get the county going for 2021. So I just want to thank them.
Thank you. Anyone else? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
Commissioner Begic.
Yep.
Chairman Duranchak.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, ma'am.
Resolution Number 2020 dash 223, Extension of Time to Access COVID-19 Budget Stabilization Funds from the County Executive. I move that resolution.
Support. Krieger.
We have motion and support. Any discussion?
We would surely appreciate, Mr. Chairman, the extension and we've been, as Commissioner Coonan mentioned, we've been, it's been a whole lot of people working a long time on trying to stabilize the budget by accessing all federal, all federal and state funding available. And, yeah, this, this, I wanted to thank everyone for that and, and just say that if we have an extension on this, we will not be abusing that. We've been very frugal. Everything has been submitted to Finance Department and this, which our Finance Department ensures that it's COVID-related and, and what you've done earlier has helped us, I think immensely in helping keeping our, even though they're way too high, it would have been much worse without the flexibility that the county board and the department heads provided by making sure that we could get vitally needed PPP or PPE and, and other items we needed to keep the county building open and functioning and not a danger to the public in terms of infection by the COVID. So if, if the board could extend it, I know a lot of, a lot of people would be very appreciative and we have not abused it. And I, I don't know, I think Jan has, could maybe comment on the amount of money that has been recovered in the first $150,000 that, that you so graciously appropriated from the general fund, or excuse me, from the stabilization fund.
Of the stabilization fund, the 150,000, we've currently spent 125,400 of that. We are in the process, working through the CDBG COVID money to recoup some of that money. And we don't know at this point, it's been a very slow process through the state trying to get that approved, but we are still working diligently through December 31st, trying to get some of those costs relieved. We're sitting on a balance of 24,000. We're asking for the extension because some of the purchases in the last go-around stated May and we need, have made purchases since then. So we're just looking to extend it to December 31st so that we can finalize these. And again, unless there's a new stimulus package that comes through, these will be our final funds that we can use and get from the state and federal government to recoup our costs.
All right, thank you. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Herrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
Commissioner Begic.
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yes.
Chairman Duranchak.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, ma'am.
Resolution Number 2020 dash 224, The Correction to the Phillips Drain Assessment from the Drain Office. I move this resolution. Support, Lutz.
We have motion support. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Ryder.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
Commissioner Begic.
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick.
Yes.
Chairman Duranchak.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Resolution Number 2020 dash 225, Road Patrol Pool Township Agreement 2021 from the Sheriff's Department. I move this resolution.
Support. Ryder.
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
Commissioner Begic.
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder.
Yes.
Chairman Duranchak.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, ma'am.
Resolution Number 2020 dash 226, The 2021 Road Patrol Service Agreements from the Sheriff's Department. I move this resolution.
Support, Ernie Krieger.
We have motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
Commissioner Begic.
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Chairman Duranchak.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, ma'am.
Resolution Number 2020 dash 227, The Bay City Public School Resource Officer Agreement for 2021, 2022 from the Sheriff's Department. I move this resolution.
Support, Begic.
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Begic.
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
Chairman Duranchak.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, ma'am.
Resolution Number 2020 dash 228, Banger Township and Banger School Resource Officer Agreement for 2021, 2022 from the Sheriff's Department. I move this resolution.
Support, Ernie Krieger.
We have motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
Commissioner Begic.
Yes.
Chairman Duranchak.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, ma'am.
Resolution Number 2020 dash 229, Pen County School Resource Officer Agreement for 2021. It's 2020, should say 2022, I think, on there, but, so we just need to type a little typo from the Sheriff's Department. I move this resolution.
Or Coonan.
Okay.
We have motion. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Herrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
Commissioner Begic.
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yes.
And Chairman Duranchak.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, ma'am.
Resolution Number 2020 dash 230, The MDOC Grant Funds for 2021 from Community Corrections. I move this resolution. Support, Lutz.
We have motion and support. Discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ryder.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
Commissioner Begic.
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick.
Yes.
Chairman Duranchak.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, ma'am.
Resolution Number 2020 dash 231, The 2021 Aerial Spring Contract from Al's Aerial Spring. It's for the Gypsy Moth Suppression Program. I move this resolution.
Or.
We have motion and support. Question? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
Commissioner Begic.
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder.
Yes.
Chairman Duranchak.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, ma'am.
Resolution Number 2020 dash 232, The Memorandum of Agreement with Mid-Michigan Community Action Agency from the Department on Aging. I move this resolution.
Support, Ernie Krieger.
We have motion and support. Any discussion?
Yes.
Commissioner Begic.
Just want to mention, I'm on the Mid-Michigan Community Action Agency Board and they have a lot of programs like this. They are located here in Bay City. They moved across the street recently. It's at the end of Washington before you get to Columbus and they have other programs beside this one available, so people can take advantage of that.
Thank you for the information. Any other discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
Commissioner Begic.
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Chairman Duranchak.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, ma'am.
Resolution Number 2020 dash 233, Elizabeth J. Husband Fund Grant from the Department on Aging. I move this resolution.
Support, Begic.
We have motion and support. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Begic.
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
And Chairman Duranchak.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, ma'am.
Resolution Number 2020 dash 234, CARES Funding for Homemaking and Personal Care Services from the Department on Aging. I move this resolution.
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Fisher Coonan.
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
Commissioner Begic.
Yes.
Chairman Duranchak.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Resolution Number 2020 dash 235, The 85-15 Split for Healthcare 2020 from Personnel. I move this resolution.
Support, Coonan.
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Herrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
Commissioner Begic.
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yes.
Chairman Herrick, or Chairman Duranchak. Seven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, ma'am.
Resolution Number 2020 dash 236, The Contract with Covenant Occupational Health for Random Drug Screenings for 2021 from Personnel. I move this resolution.
Support, Lutz.
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Ryder.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
Commissioner Begic.
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick.
Yes.
Chairman Duranchak.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, ma'am.
Resolution Number 2020 dash 237, The Blue Cross Blue Shield Medical Schedule A Renewal Term for 2021 from Personnel. I move this resolution.
Thanks.
Support, Lutz. We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
Commissioner Begic.
Yes.
Commissioner Begic.
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder.
Yes.
Chairman Duranchak.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, ma'am.
Resolution Number 2020 dash 238, We have the Payables General Bayonet Center of Arms from Finance. I move this resolution.
Support, Begic.
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
Commissioner Begic.
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Chairman Duranchak.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, ma'am.
Resolution Number 2020 dash 239, A Budget Adjustment from Drug Law Enforcement Bayonet from Finance. I move this resolution.
Support, Ernie Krieger.
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Begic.
Yes.
Commissioner Coonan.
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick.
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder.
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz.
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger.
Yes.
Chairman Duranchak.
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays. Seven yeas, zero nays.
Resolution number 2020-240, 2021 budgeted maintenance expenses from the ISD. I move this resolution.
Support, Koonin.
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Krieger? Commissioner Begic?
Yes.
Commissioner Koonin?
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz?
Yes.
Chairman Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you ma'am.
Resolution number 2020-241, the Cost Allocation Bit Award from Finance. I move this resolution.
Support, Koonin.
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Herrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz?
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger?
Yes.
Commissioner Begic?
Yes.
Commissioner Koonin?
Yes.
Chairman Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you ma'am.
Resolution number 2020-242, the Use of the Bay County Canteen by Great Lakes Bay Health as a COVID-19 testing site. From Building and Grounds, I move this resolution.
Support, Ernie Krieger.
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Ryder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz?
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger?
Yes.
Commissioner Begic?
Yes.
Commissioner Koonin?
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick?
Yes.
Chairman Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you ma'am.
The analysis of the general fund equity, I make a motion to receive this.
Support.
We have motion and support. Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Lutz?
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger?
Yes.
Commissioner Begic?
Yes.
Commissioner Koonin?
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder?
Yes.
Chairman Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you ma'am.
And Executive Directive Number 2007-11, I make a motion to receive this document.
Support, Koonin.
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote.
Commissioner Krieger?
Yes.
Commissioner Begic?
Yes.
Commissioner Koonin?
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz?
Yes.
Chairman Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Mr. Chairman, that is all from the Ways and Means Committee.
Thank you, Commissioner Herrick. From Personnel and Human Services, we have this evening with us, Commissioner Tom Ryder.
I think he's muted.
Sorry about that. Resolution 2020-243, vacancies in 911 Central Dispatch, Department on Aging, and the Sheriff's Office. I would motion that resolution.
Support Begic.
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Begic?
Yes.
Commissioner Koonin?
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz?
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger?
Yes.
Chairman Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you ma'am.
And we have, from the Office of Assigned Counsel, the July and September 2020 reports. I would motion to receive.
Support, Koonin.
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Koonin?
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz?
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger?
Yes.
Commissioner Begic?
Yes.
Chairman Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you ma'am.
It's all Commissioner Ryder had. With that, I think we're, I lost him, but from the Board of Commissioners, Vice Chair, Commissioner Lutz.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Today I bring before the Board Resolution 2020-244. It's the report to the County Executive. I move to receive that report.
Support, Herrick.
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Commissioner Begic.
Just noticed Debbie Key's name at the end there. I know she ran the Senior Olympics. She's going to be hard to replace, as is all the employees that are retiring her, but especially Debbie from the Division on Aging and the Senior Olympics. I know Beth Urick will miss her. Thank you.
All right. Any other discussion? Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Ryder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz?
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger?
Yes.
Commissioner Begic?
Yes.
Commissioner Koonin?
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick?
Yes.
Chairman Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you ma'am.
That's all I have from the Board of Commissioners, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Lutz. Reports of the county officials, County Executive Jim Barsha.
Thank you, Chairman Durancheck, and I want to echo the sentiments of Commissioner Begic about the tremendous service that Debbie Keyes has provided our county. And as you know, is retiring, but she has been a great person, leading our efforts at making a better, ensuring a better quality of life for our more mature residents of Bay County. And I offer her my congratulations on work well done for her lengthy service for the Bay County Division, and then later Department on Aging. But also want to take this opportunity to, unless we have a special meeting, this may be the last meeting of 2020 that our county board is all together. And I want to take this opportunity to thank Commissioners Lutz, Ryder, and Durancheck for all they've done in their 26 combined years of service to Bay County. I commend Commissioner Ryder for his six years of service. Commissioner Lutz, for his 10 years of service, including serving as Board Vice Chair. And Commissioner Durancheck, for his 10 years of service, including serving as the Board Chair. Many people do not understand the time and commitment it takes to fulfill these roles of public service. But you all have shown dedication and determination in pursuit of making Bay County a better place for its residents. And on behalf of the residents and myself, I want to thank especially the three Commissioners who are pursuing other activities in the next chapter. So, thanks guys, and it's been great working with you.
Mr. Chairman, I have some awards to follow up on Mr. Barsha. Do I need a microphone? I have some awards here. I'm the designated presenter here. So, in appreciation to Michael E. Lutz for dedicated service to the citizens of Bay County as the 7th District County Commissioner, 1-1, 2013, to 1231, 2020, Bay County Board of Commissioners. He's also my old guy for home affairs.
Thanks for the commercial. And I appreciate it. And I really want to thank the staff here, if I could, Elphaba. Deanne, of course. We can't run this board without Deanne. She'll be a missed commodity whenever she does decide to retire. And generally, I thank you and your staff for all the help that they've given to me and my abilities to do my job as County Commissioner. They've always answered my questions. They've always had the answers. Maybe not right off the bat, but they got them, and I appreciate it. I wish all the best in the years to go.
Thank you.
Good to share with Lutz.
Thank you.
And to our Chair, Mr. Durancheck. An appreciation to Michael J. Durancheck for dedicated service to the citizens of Bay County as the 1st District County Commissioner, 1-1, 2015, to 1231, 2020, Bay County Board of Commissioners. There's one. Thank you. I have another one. The Gable, presented to Michael Durancheck for outstanding leadership as Chairman of the Bay County Board of Commissioners, 2019 to 2020. The Gable Award.
Thank you very much.
And I have one here from Mr. Ryder. I'll read it.
No.
I'll read it to him when I can, or somebody will. In appreciation to Tom Ryder for dedicated service to the citizens of Bay County as the 7th District County Commissioner, 1-1, 2017, to 1231, 2020, Bay County Board of Commissioners. Thank you.
Congratulations, guys.
Thank you very much. I enjoyed my time.
Yes, I did.
Any other unfinished business? New business? Health Department Information, we received Resolution Number 2020-245, all the Commissioners. That was a request from Joel Strauss, Health Director. Looking for support on this. What it amounts to is some much-needed help at the Health Department. No additional general funds are needed. In order to get the person that's probably the best qualified, it's going to be a PNO9 pay grade as requested, and salary listed range 57.4 to 69.0 after three years. So...
I'll make that motion, Mr. Chairman.
Support, Herrick.
We have motion and support. Any discussion? Hearing none. Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Lutz?
Yes.
Commissioner Krieger?
Yes.
Commissioner Begic?
Yes.
Commissioner Koonin?
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder?
Yes.
Chairman Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you very much. Miscellaneous. Anyone have any miscellaneous? Commissioner Begic?
Quick announcement, sort of to follow up on Jim Barsha's announcement that they are working on the funding. I was on a conference call with Matt Chase from the National Association of Counties, and they're hoping to get something through that would get down to the county level. Sometimes it gets stuck at the state level, but they're working hard to get funding to the county level. Hopefully, before their session's over. If not, maybe the beginning of the next year. But they are working on some funding for specific counties, so just want to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you. Ernie, you had a comment?
Yeah, if I could. As Kim had said earlier, I'd like to say thanks to the County Exec and his Finance Department, Bob Redman, for putting this budget together. You know, in past years, we've always gone to the very end of the month of December to try to get this through, and your people and Bob have worked very well together to make this happen. And of course, we can't forget Deanne being able to get this out for us to review so that everybody knows what's going on and the fact that we can ask questions and get answers to it. So, again, my hats off to everyone that put this budget together to make sure that we continue to provide the services needed for the residents of Bay County. Thank you. Yep, thank you. And just to kind of add a little bit, besides the budget and that, the Finance Department has been extremely busy with Treasury and the CARES Act and the reporting. I know because I have, you know, I've been signing stuff just about on every other day. So, kudos to gals up there and the guys. They're doing a great job up there looking out for the county. So, Jan, good job. This is another point of interest. I received from Treasury also that the courts, all their grants that we signed for and everything about two or three weeks ago have all been approved, and they have sent back the documents to the courts. So, that's another thing for the 2021 budget for courts, District Court, and the other court. Anyone else have any announcements or anything? Anyone?
I just had a question. There's somebody on here that says sad Michigan fan. I think I know who that person is, but he probably would be sadder if he played Ohio State and got whooped.
Yeah, for sure. Appointments coming up in November, Building Authority, we already took care of that. December, Department on Aging. We have appointments, District 2, Douglas DeWald, excuse me, District 4, Sally Kaminsky. District 6, Mary Donnelly, and at-large Bonnie Warden. So, all our committee appointments that'll end in 1231, 22 have been appointed. Do we need to receive that, Deanne?
You can, a Commissioner could make a motion to concur with it.
I'll move.
And I'll support it, Ernie Krieger.
Great. Thank you, Kim. Thank you, Ernie. We have a motion and support to concur with the appointments. Any other discussion? Roll call vote please.
Commissioner Krieger?
Yes.
Commissioner Begic?
Yes.
Commissioner Koonin?
Yes.
Commissioner Herrick?
Yes.
Commissioner Ryder?
Yes.
Commissioner Lutz?
Yes.
Chairman Durancheck?
Yes.
Seven yeas, zero nays.
Thank you. Is there any need for a closed session, Mrs. Johnson?
There is not, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Chair?
Very much, Jody, and Julie, and Nick at IT for putting us together. Thank you. We didn't get Zoom bombed, so you gals are doing, and Nick are doing a good job. Very good. Thank you. Motion to adjourn. Oh, Ernie, I'm sorry.
Not a problem. So, Mr. Durancheck, I would make a motion to adjourn, seeing that this is December, coming up on the Christmas. I hope everybody has a very safe and healthy Christmas. So, move to adjourn.